May we have roll call for the city council?
Council members Drayman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Eusefion.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
And may we also have roll call for the Redevelopment Agency, please?
Agency members Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Eusefion. Chairman Drayman.
Here.
May we have your report, please?
Agenda for the January fifteen, two thousand eight joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was postponed Thursday, January ten, two thousand eight on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Will you read the first item?
The item for discussion today is Director of Planning and Director of Development Services regarding discussion of certain policies and options for adjustment to the corresponding requirements established by the downtown specific plan. Presentation only.
Thank you. Mr. Hirani.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, and members of the council and the agency. Today, we're going to do, Alan Loomis has actually prepared a PowerPoint presentation that, most of which he will go through, and I can just tell you that the interesting parts, which are interesting images, he will talk about, and there are two slides that I will talk about, which are not as pretty. But what we're presenting to you are a number of things. First, you have raised questions and issues, and you've requested that we come up with some ideas and some specific items that we're going to go through today. In addition to that, over the past several months, working with the downtown specific plan, we have learned a few things about it that we're going to recommend some adjustments. Today, what we're asking you to do is to consider the presentation and consider some of the ideas that we put in front of you, and if you would, at the end of each or at the end of the entire presentation, give us some direction as to what, if any modifications, you'd like us to make, and then based on your direction, we'll go ahead and actually formally proceed with that. So Alan, would you please?
Yes, there's really six topics that have come up in both discussion with the agency reviewing projects and just that we've found working with different applicants that we have outlined here. This is the outline for the presentation. The first one came up as the most recent, I believe it came up last week, which was to discuss some incentives for museums, galleries, and exhibit halls. The second is to discuss the public art requirement and procedures that are currently in the downtown specific plan. Third is to discuss the public open space requirement currently in the downtown specific plan. Fourth is to take a second look or another look at the heightened density standards, perhaps tailoring them a little bit to certain areas of downtown. The fifth issue is to look at projects that might be partially in the downtown specific plan and partially in adjacent zones. And then finally, there's some miscellaneous text cleanups that we'd like to propose we need to address, and it's kind of typical, and sort of like zoning code cleanups that have been happening on a regular basis. So that's the agenda for the discussion this afternoon. Before we get into that, it's worth just sort of going back and reminding ourselves the vision of the downtown specific plan was for a very exciting and vibrant urban center with all sorts of shopping, cultural, living, residential, and employment opportunities within a short walking distance. That really drives a lot of the standards and guidelines in the specific plan and a lot of the core policies, and so it's useful just remembering that as we move forward into other topics. So the first topic we'll discuss is the idea of incentives for museum, galleries, and exhibit halls. Hassan will address this. But basically, this came out of, currently in the downtown specific plan, we have an outline of a number of kind of public benefits or project characteristics that we would like to see for which there are described benefits for bringing a project with that particular component. So there's incentives to bring certain kinds of uses and project characteristics in the downtown. Right now, museums, galleries, and exhibit halls are not one of those categories, but we have some thoughts about how we might include that.
Well, given that you gave us the direction to look at these specific uses, that really actually helped us a great deal to take a look and see how that would fit in the, in the way that the downtown specific plan has been organized. And as you know, the downtown specific plan is an incentive-based plan and not a, not a, the kind of zoning that just does not allow people to do things. Instead, it encourages people to do certain activities. So if you were to look at museums, galleries, and exhibit halls as a group of uses that you would like to attract and encourage in the downtown specific plan, it's quite possible to do it in two ways. So first, which kind of projects are we talking about? There are existing buildings which give us a set of constraints that, but we think we have some ideas to deal with those buildings, and then there is, of course, the new projects that are for brand-new buildings, and then whether or not you would like to, this particular set of incentives apply throughout downtown, or whether you would like to designate a part of downtown as the arts district, for example, if that's what you wanted to do. In the discussions we had with members of the public when we were having the downtown specific plan meetings, we actually encouraged everyone to consider the entire downtown specific plan area a place where the arts could be attracted to. That will give us a little bit more flexibility in terms of what's available, in terms of real estate, to make available to arts-related uses. So we, in a way, staff still maintains that perhaps maintaining the entire downtown as an area that you want to encourage these three uses would be the best idea. However, we are open to looking at designating a particular segment. Then, then what would be the incentives? In our business, we know that there are three things that speak very clearly to developers. That's parking, the cost of providing parking, and then additional height and density. Those are the three things that speak and translate into actually dollar incentives for the developers. And that's, in fact, the two ways that we think we could provide that. For existing projects, if you have an existing building that you want to encourage arts, these three uses, museums, galleries, or exhibit halls, one way we could do that, within the downtown specific plan area, we could say, for example, that those uses, as long as they're covenanted to be used for that, the number of square feet that you want to dedicate to any of these three uses, as long as you covenant that these uses will stay in place, you will be exempt from any parking requirements. We do know that exhibit halls, galleries, and museums tend to actually really work very well in conjunction with other uses in downtown areas, and they do not ordinarily tend to generate additional impacts of their own, and that would be one way to recycle the first floor of a lot of the existing buildings, if that's what you wanted to do. Or if you're a little uncomfortable about zero parking requirement, you could say a park, a reduced parking requirement within the downtown specific plan area if this is an ancillary use rather than the main use of the building. So what that would look like is something like, right now, these uses would fall under a category that would require four parking spaces per one thousand square feet. And that is not always easy to provide. Now, if you have an older building that has limited parking, and you allow the first floor, for example, to be used for any of these uses, and you want to dedicate the rest of this, that gives a little bit more flexibility to developers to bring other tenants to the rest of the building, and that becomes an economic incentive. So that's for the existing buildings. And as for new buildings, we could very easily add an incentive to the incentive chapter, the same way we give parks an open space incentive and other types of incentive or signature design, we could say that if a building, if a project incorporates any of these three uses or a combination thereof in their project through the development agreement, much in the same way we do the other incentives, could then be the given additional height and floor area ratio. And the most logical way to do that, that would really translate into something meaningful, would be if they give fifty percent or more of the first floor or one floor of the building, dedicate that to any of these uses, they could be entitled to one additional story and the FAR that goes with it. Like the other incentives, that we think that would work very well. We could memorialize that in the development agreement, much in the same way we do with hotel use or any other kind of use that we do currently. That pretty much summarizes the two, the three, the incentives that we think would work best and most clearly we could fit into the process. And if you'd like, we could discuss them now or we could discuss them at the end of the presentation.
Any questions?
I have some comments, but I'm more than happy to wait. It's you, Mr. Mayor.
How many different sections do we have? In other words, how long, if we had a question, how long would we be waiting before we got to it?
We have six, six individual topics to cover. We can go through them relatively quickly so we get to your comments more directly.
Let's see if we can go through it so our questions are still fresh in our minds and still pertinent.
Okay.
So we'll hold, we'll hold questions till the end then.
Okay. The next topic relates to the public art requirement and procedures in the downtown specific plan. This has come up as we've reviewed current projects, as the agency has granted final design review on projects. We've often, one of the comments or conditions of approval is that they submit an art plan which is required by the downtown specific plan. So we thought, since that keeps coming up, we'd want to go over what those requirements are. The first is that it applies to all projects over five hundred thousand dollars in value. There's some exceptions for nonprofit groups or affordable housing, but generally applies to all projects. One percent of the total project value should be spent on public art. That's the requirement. The third major component is that the project's art plan needs to be approved by the city's Art and Culture Commission. That's written into the specific plan. What's not written into the specific plan is when that approval needs to occur. And I'm going to discuss our thoughts about where that should happen momentarily, but generally, we think it should happen between stage one design review and stage two design review. And the reason for that is that it should, art should also be integrated into the project design, and that could have some pretty significant implications on the architecture of the building and what the agency finally approves. So we have some photographic examples of public art in different locations. The first here is public art located in Glendale. The one that's probably the most successful and most well-known are the Frogs at the Marketplace. Not necessarily because they are the most well-crafted of the public art we have in the city, but probably because they're the most interactive and the most recognizable and work with the overall project design. Everybody knows Me Me at the Frogs is a kind of location to go to. Ben Franklin located in the Exchange is a very nicely sculpted piece of artwork. You can sit next to Ben Franklin, but he is a little bit hidden and probably not as well-known as the Frogs. Some of the other artwork downtown, we do have this rather peculiar and kind of wonderful tile terrazzo mural of bread located on Orange Street, but the vast majority of our artwork in downtown is sculptures placed in front of buildings. And this is a kind of artwork that we're trying to avoid downtown in general. There are, of course, the options of doing a very nice piece of artwork and placing it in a fountain. This example is at the Weston Hotel in Pasadena. But then there are examples of utilizing the sculpture and kind of putting it into the building in a more creative fashion. The fish, I think, is from Seattle. And I particularly love the bear holding up the building, which is located in Denver. Obviously, if the art component of a building was this bear, I think we would like to know about it before stage two final design review.
Oh, you need a Trojan horse.
There's also artwork that is not necessarily sculpture. There's a number of pieces where poetry is commissioned, and that's engraved into sidewalks or into the sides of building. This particular poetry, this is also from Denver, works with the manhole cover and a drain. There's a fish on the drain, so there's a sort of story being told about where your water goes and how it impacts fish. There are, of course, various kinds of murals. This example is in San Diego. Obviously, this is a case where the mural is completely part of the facade design of the building. Again, it's something we'd like to know about before final, final design approval. This is another example of a mural, this one located in Pasadena for a project that's nearing completion. As you can see, the name is Cinema Lofts, and two-one-seven is terrazzo pattern, and the film strip, two-one-seven, is the address of this building. So again, it's an artwork that's really tied to the concept of the building, the way the building is named, and the address of the building, and how the building is designed. There are other examples. This is an example of a series of these that were done in billboard structures that were done in Hollywood. These are interesting in that they engage other senses than just a piece of sculpture or your sound. In this case, the billboard feature cast a shadow on the building across the street. And being that this is Hollywood, the figures are from classic movie scenes. In this case, this is The Wild Bunch. If you walk elsewhere in Hollywood, you'll see examples from The Magnificent Seven and other famous Hollywood classic movies. Then there's another example that engages into light components. This is one that actually we've suggested a number of developers downtown take a look at. This is the Met Lofts in the South Park area near Staples Center downtown LA. The building is designed by Johnson Fain. The artwork is done by a group called Electro Land. And basically, there are two components to this. The first you see at the top is this grid that you walk on, and it's pressure-sensitive like scales, and so as you walk on it, you change the pattern of lighting, and then that corresponds to the grid of red squares on the actual facade of the building. So somebody walking into the building, as they walk into the lobby, they change the sensors, and then the lights on the facade change. So it's a really kind of interactive piece, but again, it's something that, as a, as an art piece, is something we probably need to know about before final design, because in this particular case, this is probably something you would also need to disclose in the visual impact section of environmental impact report. So again, we'd like for the art component to go to the Art and Culture Commission between stage one and stage two design. The final example, again, in downtown LA, this is the Caltrans Building, which people have a great number of opinions about the architecture of this structure, but there is an art component, which is the neon, horizontal neon, that wraps around the lobby area of the building. That is an artist-commissioned piece, but is so well-integrated into the overall project design that it looks like it's part of the architecture. So those are the kinds of thoughts that we've had as it relates to the public art component, some of the suggestions we've given to developers to look at and think about as an approach. But one of the reasons we think a visit to the Arts and Culture Commission on this art plan is important during the design process and not simply after approval by, final design approval by the agency. Moving on to the public open space requirement, this has come up also in a number of projects where we've had discussions at stage one about projects not being compliant with the open space requirement, and some questions have come up as to what exactly does the specific plan ask for, particularly as it relates to residential-only projects. So just to review this, the purpose of the open space requirement is to provide open space within walking distance of anyone downtown. And the requirement is that five percent of the overall site area, that's the site area as opposed to the project area, shall be usable and accessible to the general public. And as we've looked at projects, the word accessible is kind of the key thing we've zeroed in on, that if somebody has five percent of his site area landscaped with rosebushes, we don't really think that's accessible to the general public. They can use the space for outdoor dining, and they are required to provide seating either through portable seating or through some sort of fixed furniture that could include the edges of planters and fountains. And this does apply to all projects in the downtown specific plan area, regardless of whether they're commercial, residential, or some sort of mixed use. So we've shown these images. As we talked about the downtown specific plan, there's the idea of courtyards and plazas, which we're familiar with as open space in projects. We also put a big emphasis on mid-block paseos or passages in the downtown specific plan as another art component or open space component. And one of the reasons for that is that our average block in downtown Glendale is three hundred by six hundred feet in dimension, which means to walk around the block is eighteen hundred feet, and that's more than a quarter mile. This is actually critical and significant when we look at other pedestrian-oriented environments, like, for example, Montrose is really about a quarter-mile diameter or radius from the center out to the very edge. So the outer circle is a half-mile diameter radius, quarter-mile walk from the center of Verdugo and Ocean, or, sorry, from Ocean View in Honolulu out to Verdugo. That corresponds to about a five-minute walk, which is, in most places in most American cities, about as far as somebody's willing to walk before they start thinking about getting into their car. And so this is one of the reasons Montrose works really well as a pedestrian environment. It's the right size. It's a quarter mile from one end, from the center out to the edge. And of course, as you walk down Honolulu Boulevard, there's lots of places to sit, lots of cafes, lots of things to look at. There's seating that's provided in public right of way, plenty of shade, so it's a nice walk as well. This principle holds up in downtown Glendale as well. It's a quarter mile from one end of the Galleria to the other, and, you know, so shopping mall developers understand this basic idea. But one of the problems we have in downtown Glendale is that it's a mile from Colorado Boulevard up to the freeway in Glen Oaks, so it's a little bit farther than the average pedestrian-oriented environment. So building a kind of good walking environment with places to sit and rest and things to look at is important. And if you recall, this is also one of the reasons the mobility study puts a great deal of emphasis on the Buzz Shuttle that would move people up and down Brand. It's because it is a fair distance to walk. Now, in downtown Glendale, walking along the Galleria, of course, this is not the most attractive place to walk along. Most people are walking inside the Galleria, I think, as opposed to outside. If you have a choice, you would probably walk somewhere else because it's not the most attractive sidewalk to stroll down. So that's one reason we have in the specific plan a lot of requirements for public open space facing onto the sidewalk. Of course, we're very familiar with requiring public open space in commercial projects through plazas, shopping plazas, dining, that sort of stuff. This has certainly been the norm in downtown Glendale and many other places. It's also been very common and standard practice to require common open space in residential projects. That's open space that is common to the residents of the project, but not necessarily open to the public. But we do, in the specific plan, ask that residential projects also provide open space available to the public, and in most cases, we think this is going to result in some sort of entry court to the building. These are two examples in Pasadena. In fact, I think the one on the left is designed by a relatively prolific and prominent Glendale architecture firm. These are small courts leading up to the gate and the buzzers and mailboxes that are open to the public, open to the sidewalk, and as you can see, they have walls, garden walls, that would allow somebody to sit and rest while they're waiting for a cab or waiting for somebody to come out of their unit and let them in. This is another example, a few blocks off of Colorado Boulevard in Old Pasadena. You can see there's a planning box with a bench built into it. And this in general is what we've been asking projects in downtown to provide, particularly those residential projects, where it's a little more uncommon to ask for open space. There are also other examples on larger projects where it becomes much more generous. These are some bigger examples, closer to fifty to a hundred units or more, in which there's actually public passages going through the project, again, with benches, landscaping. These are residential-only projects for the most part, but with public open space. And then, of course, there, these are, this example's from San Diego. This, the building in the background, I believe, is probably a three-hundred-unit tower, and their open space is this very nice garden that's open to the public but part of the project. Another example, I believe this one is from Vancouver, again, a public garden as part of a residential project. So when we've talked about residential-only projects and also those mixed-use projects, and we've requested that they meet the open space requirement, these are the kinds of things we have in mind, and depending on the scale of the project, the open space that we're asking them to make available to the public for people walking through downtown to stop and rest, may in some cases be relatively small, even under five hundred square feet on some projects. Moving on to our fourth topic is looking at some of the heightened density standards in the downtown. In the specific plan, we regulate density through three, three tools. The first is we regulate height by the number of feet. So buildings can be, depending on which area you are, are up to a certain number of feet in height and then no further. They're also regulated by the number of stories. So even though you're, it says maybe you can build up to a hundred ninety-five feet, that doesn't mean you can put in nineteen very thin floors that are only ten feet, because the regulations might also say you're limited to twelve stories in height. Then we also use floor-to-air ratio as another tool of regulating density. So there's three tools we have to regulate density in addition to the various design guidelines that begin to chip away at the edges of the building, the three fundamental numbers that regulate height and density. What we have found in practice over the past year using this is that the FAR standards are really the most restrictive, that generally, as people are working out projects, they will hit up against the FAR standard long before they'll ever come close to maxing out the possible height in terms of number of stories or number of feet. And so we think some review of the FAR standards throughout the downtown might be warranted. What we think just as a kind of initial read is that we could probably increase the FAR by point five throughout the downtown without causing a lot of changes to the overall intent of the downtown specific plan. There's certain districts and areas of the downtown where we might be able to look at even higher increase in the allowed density. So that, if the council has an interest, we could begin to look at that and come back with some very specific proposals. With the qualifier that any adjustments to the floor-to-air ratio will require some additional environmental review, since these environmental impact report was based on the numbers that are currently adopted in the specific plan. Specifically, as relates to heightened density, there is one area that has come up on a couple of occasions, actually, when we adopted the specific plan, there was some interest in looking at this in more detail, and that's the Alex Theater District, which is the block, blocks surrounding the Alex Theater on Brand Boulevard from Wilson up to about Lexington. It's outlined here in the red. Right now, the specific plan caps that off at two stories maximum in height, and if the project utilizes the incentive, they may go up to three stories. So it's the most restrictive in terms of height anywhere in the downtown specific plan, and really, the intent of that was to maintain the prominence of the Alex Theater spire in downtown. It's maybe our most recognizable landmark downtown. It's certainly unique to Glendale, and so the intent was to try and maintain this historic Main Street context of the Alex Theater and limit the height of buildings around it so the Alex Theater spire is always the most important thing in that area of mid-brand. One of the examples we could look at as to what not to do in this case is the Hollywood and Highland Complex, where they added adjacent to the Man Grauman's Chinese Theater. As you can see here, the Kodiak Theater in the background kind of hovers over the Chinese Theater, and probably a number of people would argue that detracts from the historic characteristic of the Chinese Theater. If we look at the Alex Theater area, this view, right now, most of the buildings are one to two stories surrounding the Alex Theater. This is a fairly crude sketch of what might it look like if we were to allow buildings to go up to three or four stories surrounding the Alex Theater, and we think this really begins to detract from the importance of the spire. What you also don't see in this view is that it would be very hard to even see the spire when you come up to the intersection at, say, as you're moving north on Brand. When you arrive at Wilson, the spire could be completely obscured by larger buildings if we increase the height limits here. So if the council had an interest in exploring the height limits in the Alex Theater District, we'd recommend that, at least between Wilson and California, which is the block that the Alex Theater faces, that we'd keep the height limits what they currently are in the specific plan, two-story maximums with a capacity to go to three stories using incentives. If there's an interest in exploring a higher range of density in this area, we think north of California, the maximum we'd recommend is four stories or six stories using incentives. What that would do is that would make that area of Brand the same as the areas on either side of it. The yellow-colored on Orange in Maryland is four stories or six stories using incentives. So that would be comparable to what's across the alley, but we would only recommend that north of California. Item five, Hassan will discuss this, and then six will be a quick wrap-up.
This one I will quickly all go over. When we came up with the downtown specific plan boundaries, we actually expanded the boundaries beyond the redevelopment area to incorporate the areas such as Central and Broadway north of the Galleria that we thought were important to the downtown. And to the extent possible, we tried to catch every large lot that we thought would be one project and incorporate that in the downtown specific plan area so we will not have two sets of regulations. What we didn't really think about was when somebody comes with a project where part of the project will be in the downtown specific plan on one or more lots, and then additional lots are added for the same project outside the DSP, then we have a dual review process. So what we're proposing here is that, and the three oh one North Central, which is in the corner, northwest corner of Central and California is a good example, that the applicant actually incorporated two single-family home lots next door, which are in a multifamily zone area into the project, but we could not, we were so limited in terms of what we could allow on that project, that they, we had to go through multiple variances, and then in the end, we were limited in our ability to help the applicant. So what we're proposing here is an idea that if fifty percent or more of the land on which the project is going to be built, whether it's one property or more, it doesn't matter if it's one single project, we project, we could give the applicant the opportunity to request, to be reviewed under the downtown specific plan regulations. We think that's, from a review process, that's a practical direction to go, because the council and the agency are the highest review authority, you know, beyond the zoning administrator or other review authorities here. And we also think the significance of these projects and their impact in the downtown would be such that it would warrant bringing those to the city council. And then this would be done through a development agreement, again. It would require a general plan amendment if the city council wanted to go in this direction. We do think that the areas would be very limited. We think this would only apply to the lots, I'm going to hold this, west of Central and south of Colorado until those blocks end. We have some half-blocks areas that we think people can incorporate. Thank you. So we think this might apply to some of these lots in here that could be incorporated into these lots, and some in here, and some in here.
Hassan, as you're saying here and here.
I'm sorry.
You mentioned the streets, please.
Yes, this is Central. So the lots immediately west of Central, which are in the downtown specific plan, could be conceivably joined with the lots immediately west of them and create new projects. And on Broadway, north of Broadway, to the north of the Galleria, these lots could conceivably be incorporated. And down on Colorado, south of Colorado, this particular block, there are some lots which are not incorporated in the DSP, and on a project-by-project basis, the city council and the agency could consider that. And then the same would go on this block, which is between Glendale Avenue and Louise, south of Colorado. And that would be north of Elk. Those would be the limited areas that this would probably apply.
The final item that needs to be addressed in the specific plan is some text cleanups. These are things we've noticed as we've worked through them. There's some general adjustments to land use terms to reconcile them with the current version of the zoning code, so we're using the same definition everywhere. We need to make some adjustment to the language of the installation and the art sections. Right now, we require that the installation, there's a typo in there that needs to be corrected. Another one that's actually critical in the mobility section, the language in the specific plan allows for tandem parking or lift parking with an approved valet parking service. That's the language in the plan. In practice, we've seen a number of projects where there's an approved parking valet service, or there's a valet service, there's lifts, there's tandem parking, and a number of other things going on. And in practice, it makes sense to bring that entire parking plan to the agency and have the agency or the council approve that. So we propose to change that to simply approved parking plan, with the agency or council being the approving body. And then in the incentives, there's some language needs to be clarified relating to how to use this, some language about how to use the historic preservation adaptive reuse ordinance or incentives. And then another qualification or modification we'd propose to make as it relates to the incentive for LEED-certified buildings or green buildings certified according to the U.S. Green Building Council. The language in the plan right now requires that the incentive is only granted to projects that actually meet certification. The difficulty with that is LEED certification is only granted after the project is finished. So there's a kind of contradiction. What we propose is that a project that meets LEED design standards but not necessarily, has not necessarily received certification yet, would still be eligible for the incentive. So that concludes the range of topics and possible amendments that have come up over the past year. And with that, obviously, we're here to get the council and agencies' input in direction. So thank you for indulging in the PowerPoint. We tried to keep.
Mr. Draymond?
Hey, well. I hope everybody, first of all, thank you for the presentation, and I hope that especially my colleagues, but also anyone that's paying attention at the moment, can feel the vibration in this room. I know you don't really feel it, I'm being dramatic, but there's a reason. No council has done this before. And we've talked about the fact that, and when I say this, I mean providing incentives to pick up some of the slack with regard to design, arts, cultural venues, that we, as a city, have traditionally said we can't afford to do on our own. That's been the argument for more or less 100 years in this city. We can't afford to create a museum, so we go without. We can't afford to create exhibit space, so we don't. This is a mechanism by which we can not only see that added, these elements added to our city, but in a way where it's not coming out of our public coffers, so to speak. It's something that, over the years, before my coming to this council, I've heard certainly all three of you, but even some of your predecessors, talking about from this dais. How do you get there? I also want to address something else that wasn't in the presentation but is implied in certain ways. The significance of this is not just that we might finally move in that direction that some of you have been speaking about, but also how that's going to benefit the city in other ways. A lot of people that say, well, what does this do for business? What does this do for the other projects in our city? What does this do for housing in our city, and so on? It does a great deal for business. When you operate a small business, a retail business, you understand that whether you have a salesman outgoing door-to-door with encyclopedias, or whether you open the front door of your store and have people come in, the longer they spend with you, the more time that they interact in your city, the more money they are likely to spend there, the more likely they are to walk into an exhibit hall or a gallery and then have lunch, and then do a little shopping, and so on. We've talked about hotels. We're going to have these hotels. We've even talked about the idea that perhaps we might end up one day with a hotel row. Well, we keep asking, as a council, who are the people going to be that are going to come stay in these hotels? And we keep being told, well, they're business people and they're tourists. Well, what are they going to do here? And I've very glibly said in the past, well, they're going to spend a day or maybe two visiting the Americana and also the Glendale Galleria, and then what? Go to the Moonlight Roller Way. What else is there in Glendale? And Mr. Quintero points out, when you open up the Auto Club tour book, what's there for Glendale? Forest lawn. It's about it. We need venues, and the business community needs venues. We need things for people to do in this city, so that when we have people visiting our city, there are reasons for them to stay here and spend their money. So that is, to me, this is, in a small, historic with a small age. This is a historic moment, because we're going to consider creating a mechanism that does not exist, that has never existed in this city, by which we're going to get, finally, to a stage where we're going to have some of the arts and culture venues, perhaps, that we can't afford to create ourselves by incentivizing it in the private sector. I took some notes as you went along. One was about the downtown specific plan, it was on your page one, and you talk about, number one, incentives for museums, galleries, and exhibit halls. I would only comment on that, that really what we're talking about is museum, gallery, and exhibit space, because the idea of exhibit halls sounds almost like convention center space, and that's really not what we're talking about. So that would be a change I would make. Maybe that relates to the segment you were talking about, text. Let me see here. On your page three, you talk about incentives. My personal preference, and I'm very interested to hear what my colleagues have to say as well, because I'm interested in their input and discussion, but from simply the presentation, I think this should apply to both existing and new projects. But that bears directly on the next one, which is B, which is where, for all of the downtown area or the just focused sub-areas. My feeling is it should be throughout for existing, but in focused area for new. And the reason is that the, what we're seeing, what we've seen in Glendale, time and time again, with regard to the arts and culture issues, is that real estate just becomes so expensive that you, so valuable, that it becomes, well, you can't even consider tying it up for, you know, galleries and so on. So for existing buildings that are already there, perhaps throughout, but I would like to see a focused area for new construction. And I want to use as an example for this, a specific case where someone wanted to build an apartment house and place a gallery, actually move a museum that he was affiliated with to our city, that would be the, sort of, the anchor tenant on the ground floor. And a very premier, actually, Mr. Weaver, you might be aware of it, the A+D, which is the Architectural Design Museum, very prominent, prestigious outfit. It would make the building that he was going to build a premium property. It would mean that he could charge higher rents there, perhaps, because design and architectural professionals would live in that building, would want to live in that building, and perhaps it would even be designed by founding members, founding architects of the museum itself. So in that case, it did not work out because of some of the issues that were outlined later, having to do with half the property falling into one side of the project area and half of it not being included there. I think it's important to try to encourage new projects in a focused area, and existing projects throughout. My answer is yes to the zero parking incentive. And in terms of the height and FAR, I'd like to hear from my colleagues on that. I know Mr. Weaver often talks about FAR. He's by far the expert, as far as I know, on that up here. Certainly, I am not. But I do know that those are certainly big incentives, and I would support including them, to what extent, I'd have to rely on input from my colleagues. I don't remember, Hassan, whether it was you or Alan that was speaking at the time about project art plans, and, it was Alan, actually, and I agree, it has to fall between stage one and stage two, and you certainly made that very clear with your two images, one, the building with the fish poking through it, and the other with the enormous bear looking in. That's something you would really want to know about before you got to final approval. And then, and also before we, as a council, have to start explaining why that might have happened. A comment to Alan Loomis, particularly, it's Honolulu Avenue. There's no Honolulu Boulevard. Let's see, just a couple other things, and then I'll, the gas bag will be quiet.
Who said it, but we didn't?
I know, I know, I can feel it, though. I can feel the love calling me a gas bag. It's page 16 of the PowerPoint, and I do forgive you for bringing a PowerPoint. It's number four, height and density standards, increase the allowable FAR throughout the downtown by 0.5. I know from my limited time here that this absolutely has created issues, but I don't know, again, I want to hear, I need to hear, I make you my teachers at the same time, sometimes, you're well aware, and this will be one of those times. I'd like to hear your comments about an increase by .5. And then, the, I was curious, when I was looking at this ahead of time, what, how you were going to characterize the photograph of Grauman's Chinese, and basically, the adjective I heard was awful, and I'm happy to hear that, because it is, what they've done there, I think that would be a tragedy to see that happen with the Alex Theater. My take on it is that we should cap that at one to two stories, just as it is between Wilson and California, which is the key block there, because should we not do that, we'll have the same effect often. And just two other comments. The issue related to the partial, projects that are partially in the downtown specific plan and partially out of, I like the idea of the 50%. In other words, allowing them to, in other words, allowing them to request being considered as a project within the DSP. The other thing is, I think, Hassan, you made the comment not about dual review because of that falling halfway in and halfway out. It's not just that it's dual review, it's dual requirements, and they're often not reconcilable from a development standard. And I endorse the text cleanups you suggested in number six with perhaps the addition that I mentioned in the beginning about museum, gallery, and exhibit space. And I, again, apologize for the length, but after all, it's your PowerPoint, and it had six parts, and you asked for input, so there's mine. I view this small discussion as a historic moment in the direction of this city that has not been considered before, and I appreciate the work you've put into it. Thank you for addressing that. And especially the part about the incentives for gallery, museum, and exhibit space, because I know we sort of hit you with that at the last moment. So, thank you.
Okay, on the next, yes, I also think it's a very, very good idea on point one, the incentives for museum, galleries, and exhibit space. Anything we can do to promote that, we're in much better shape. I have a question. In terms of the approval for the public art, I wasn't quite clear on how that would work, arts and culture, city council, how does that work?
The specific plan requires that a public art plan be submitted and approved by the Arts and Cultural Commission, appealable to the city council. It's unclear exactly what a public art plan means. There's no precise definition for that. It's left a little bit open-ended, because there's a capacity that a public art plan may mean that they stage regular performances in their public plaza, that's not a sculptural piece, but they bring in, you know, mimes or something like that. So in that case, the public art plan would be every Saturday afternoon, we're going to have some performers, and they're going to be performing between this time and that time, and this is the kind of performers we would have. Since we haven't taken any of these projects to the Arts and Culture Commission, we haven't quite had to cross that bridge yet.
So arts and culture approves, and then ultimately it comes to us, right?
Yes, it does. Ultimately, you approve everything, yes.
Okay, now, to the issue of sort of sub-zones, while I think there are some zones where we could have even more incentives, I would want to keep it to all of the downtown, because there's no telling what someone may come up with, a concept that maybe isn't in one of the zones that we think public or, you know, museum and galleries would work, and in fact, they do, and they go ahead, it's their money. So I'm in, I'm for keeping it to all of the downtown. In terms of the increase in the FAR, I'm fine with that, and especially in the Gateway District. I think we're way, we missed the boat on the Gateway District. Then the Alex, I do agree that it should be kept low on between Wilson and California, but I'm not, I don't particularly feel that way across the street. In other words, on the east side, next to the Alex, that block, I'm okay. But across the street, I don't see why we can't go up to three or four, and, I mean, otherwise, I'm afraid that nothing is going to change in mid-brand, to tell you the truth. I just think it's going to be so expensive if we don't, you know, encourage the property And then number, number five, absolutely, I'm for the staff suggestion. And I have a question there. You went as far as the Galleria. You went as far as the Galleria, basically, across the street from the Galleria, you went, you didn't go to Columbus, is that correct?
Correct, because the, then the street itself becomes a barrier. It's only where you have two adjacent lots.
Only to Central.
Right.
Okay. Then on the other side of the Galleria, starting at Columbus and Colorado, there we have the San Fernando Road redevelopment district, and that's on both sides of the
Colorado.
Of Colorado.
That's right.
Reaching all the way
That's exactly where the San Fernando Road, you know, zoning ends, right.
Okay, so anyway, no, I'm very pleased. I think this is a great idea. I think we're headed in the right direction, and hopefully someday, the Auto Club Guide will, when mentioning Glendale, mention something other than, than the Forest Lawn and all the activities there. And I don't mean to get personal, Mr. Weaver, about Forest Lawn, but
I'm going there someday.
But anyway, this is a great idea, good work by
Question is, well, you have to change the FAR to do it.
Mr. Weaver.
Sorry.
Yeah, the line I used to use, Mr. Draymond, anybody coming to Glendale, say, "Where are you going to take them?" Well, we have Forest Lawn. That was it. It's, it's changing everywhere. This is one that's, sometimes it's hard to get out of the box and try to foresee what could happen in the future. The hardest one for me is on, for the museum, galleries, exhibit halls, trying to see where that could go. Sit there looking at the economics of having a huge open space just for people to go in and walk around, does the economics work on brand? So that, that one, I'm, I can go along with it, but I just don't know where it's going to take us, if there'd be many that'll bite on that one. Public arts, I can tell you, I like more of it where it's in the framework of the building as opposed to a statue out in front. I'm not, I don't see much value in that. Do you want to put a Trojan on a horse holding up the building rather than a UCLA bear? That's fine with me. Things like that, I just don't think are as appropriate. The fish in the building, something, in other words, attached, the lights, the light show that goes on. Might be some neighbors that complain on something like that, but where it's integrated more into the building rather than a statue sitting out there. I don't know how many people sit next to Benjamin Franklin or look at the horses on North Brand. People pass by, it's just part of the landscape. If there were seating areas or something, it would seem to be more important to the public. The open space I still get confused on, 101 North Brand, where BJ's is, on the first floor, the rest of the building is cantilevered over the first floor. BJ's has outdoor eating. Is that considered public open space?
Yes.
Okay. That's the kind of open space that I really go for. If buildings can create that open space on the first floor, whether it's for dining or hot summer day, and then cantilever, the floor is above out over, that maximizes to me the use of the, the floor space. Maybe people will walk into these, some of these small places, but we have to be very aware of where we put those open spaces because of safety concerns, like we've talked about on the Louise site, where it's now going to be gated. We count that as open space, correct?
Yes.
Even though it'll be gated at night for safety reasons.
Correct.
So, where you put it and how, it's important on brand. What we've done on the 101 building makes sense. It just hasn't been utilized as well as it could be, up to now. The floor ratio, I've held forever, the floor ratio means nothing to me. It's always what you visually see when you look at it, whether it's a home or an office or whatever. If, if you're staring at it and you say, "This is a monstrosity, it's too big, it's a mansion," it doesn't matter what the FAR is. So, the heights downtown is controlled by the number of stories. It's controlled by heights. So let the FAR fluctuate more. You have the controls, we have the controls with the other factors, building heights and the number of stories, which is, again, the visual thing. What do I care what the FAR is if I like what I see? And since we are the architects of all the buildings in the downtown redevelopment zone, what more can you ask? I'm certainly not going to ask for the FAR. The downtown specific, the 50% rule, yeah, except I get hung up on, gee, what if it's 45% or 40? I don't know if the right rule is to pick a number then to say if the, the majority of the development is governed by what's happening, like on Central. Give the flexibility to the planning department administratively to see if they adjust. Yeah, makes sense to combine this parcel that's adjacent into it without saying, "Well, gosh, you're, you're at 45%, you can't do it." Maybe we mess up on a, on a good project that way. So I would look at giving staff more flexibility on that. And I know I may be alone, I don't know, but Grauman's Chinese, yeah, terrible. That's why personally, I obviously hoped that the lots north and south of the Alex Theater eventually be open space, printing on brand, to try to expand the front courtyard and opening Alex Theater up. With the direction it's going in terms of performances and whatever, to have a much more glamorous entrance into the Alex Theater by expanding that narrow courtyard out, it would set it off, the spiral would stand up better, it would look a lot better. Then step it one or two stories up. We've looked at some samples of that already, and the architects I've talked to are in agreement with that way of doing it. You don't want to cram it in, you've got to open it up, and it's, it's not open enough now. I don't know, did I cover everything that, well, change the text, correct the text. I think it's okay. I mean, it's a lot to bite on, but as we've all said, we knew when we adopted the plan, we would be back fine tuning. And have we, even if we adopt everything that comes forth, will that end it? Probably not. We'll fine tune again. As you've said, Mr. Draymond, this is the first time the council has taken the, the apple and really tried to do something. Where it'll take us? I don't know. I can't see how it'll do anything but be positive for Glendale. And I like the idea of the incentives, in whatever area we want to utilize them in, because it does boil down to economics and developer. He has to work the numbers. We get the approval we see, but he's got to work the numbers, so I like, I like the developer, or, for want of a better word, to have the flexibility to come forth with something, and let staff and let us decide whether it works or not.
Okay.
Otherwise, very good.
Thanks. I have a couple questions, and whether this is the first bite or the second bite of the apple, I don't think is too important. The museum issue, how in the heck are you going to enforce that? Let's say I have a building design, and I'm going to say I'm going to have a museum or exhibit space on this ground floor, and I get the incentives of additional height, and it comes time, and oops, my museum didn't turn out. What happens then? How do you enforce that?
We would memorialize it in the development agreement, that as long as they maintain that particular use, they would be taking advantage of the benefits. But however, as soon as they lose, if they give up that, then they would have to come and somehow do two things. If they're using the parking incentive, then they would have to somehow meet the parking requirement. Or if it's, if they're taking height and density incentives, we would treat them the same way that we do with the hotels. We would have to bring them back to the City Council and with some proposals as to what the new trade-off would be, that they're, what is the new benefit that they're providing instead of the one that you just lost. So that's very much like the other uses, that we could do everything we can in a development agreement, but if something changes, we still have the flexibility to bring it back to you. At that time, though, they have had the high density.
I mean, do you, but don't you foresee any potential problems in that when, you know, they've got the, parking, I understand you've got some
Yes.
You've got some leverage on them, but they've already built the plus-two stories, that they've got the six stories in mid-brand, and, oh my, sorry, my museum didn't work out. What are we going to tell them?
We may.
Yes, we could foresee potential problems.
But how can you
Yes, and then what Ms. Van Muyden just whispered to me, instrument is the covenants. Instrument imposing covenants, that's a legal term, not a planning term.
So, in, in other words, potentially, those two, let's say it's two additional stories. Those stories may be required to remain vacant
Right.
Until they comply. There's a number of ways, whether it's through court instruments or otherwise, that we could look at enforcing the requirement that, whether it's a museum through a development agreement or other cultural incentive that they're taking advantage of, that, that gets enforced so that it becomes real, instead of being essentially a, a toothless measure, if you will.
So my problem is, essentially, I'm saying, I think we've got a problem when we start giving height incentives for that. I mean, it's ridiculous that you would have, let's say, a six-story building, because my ground floor museum didn't work out, I've got to vacate the top two floors. I think we need to think of ways to deal with that, and how would we essentially deal with that? Or, let's say, I bring a museum in after the building is constructed, let's say, into an existing building. Maybe you can deal with parking, you know, waivers on that, but I just, I don't want to have a situation where we've got two stories vacant, or we've got a ground floor vacant because there's no museum that is required to be in there. So let's think about that, and maybe find some, some good ways to
It's, it's either a combination of enforcement or flexibility for the City Council to say, "Okay, a museum didn't work out, let's substitute the museum for some other work of art," or some other cultural, I, I, something, some other cultural program that we could insert there. We can look at options as, as you send us back, we can look at options, and maybe it is a combination of both, maybe it's one, more emphasis on one or the other, maybe it's more flexibility for the council to say, "Gee, the museum didn't work out, okay, you get a pass on this one," or you have to substitute it with another art form.
And let's be a little more precise with our definition of museum and exhibition, is Z-gallery.
That's retail.
Yeah, I mean, there's, but there are some, some uses that kind of cross that line and sort of, I mean, if we really mean just, you know, nonprofit museum display. If that's what we mean, let's tighten it up. If we mean, you can have some retail, you can have some cafes, many museums have cafes and restaurants incorporated into them. So, you know, the merchandising, some museums have, some museums have theaters. I mean, you go to, you know, any, many of the Smithsonian's have small, anywhere from small theater exhibitions to large theater rooms. So let's, let's work with that definition and, and tighten it up a bit.
We will have a definition. We will give you options as to what happens if somebody takes advantage of the incentive and then does not deliver on it. For, for the time being, we, we are building a flexibility, and then, just so you know, this is not impossible. Soho in New York has gone through exactly what you're talking about, that they became so successful. However, you know, dealing with success is a little bit happier than dealing with lack of success. So we'll give you some options for that to look at, and then, you know, we'll give, and both in terms of what kind of restrictions or incentives you want to give, and what the alternatives would be.
Okay. My next point is, when we were talking about the Alex Theater, you had the graphic where you showed us Grauman's, and you showed us what might happen to the Alex. But then, if I'm not mistaken, later on, you said that on that block or two blocks, three to five feet, three to five stories are
No.
Would be permissible? Was it two to three? Was it?
California.
Two to three, but the three stories on the, across the street, actually, on Alex, in the Alex Theater District, is limited in the number of feet, but
Okay.
There are existing three-story buildings that are shorter than what we would allow under the DSP. That's kind of, we want to keep the envelope at a lower height on both sides.
Okay, I just, I thought that was on the Alex Theater side as well. As far as the 50% within the DSP, properties that are 50% within the DSP to be governed by the DSP, I think in terms of streamline, streamlining the application and the permit process, that's great. But I'm concerned about, you know, digging deep into those neighborhoods where, you know, otherwise, let's say, the
Yeah.
The current DSP boundaries is one lot into Central, one lot west of Central. Now, maybe we're going, you know, double that distance, and I'm concerned about any sort of impact that might occur. How, what do you think about that?
We already have written specific standards and, and guidelines for the lots that are adjacent, that are in the downtown specific plan or adjacent to residential neighborhoods in particular, but also non-downtown specific line neighborhoods, that we have requirements that they need to be respectful of the form and density and the character of those neighborhoods. And we, we obviously will be bringing recommendations to you with Alan Loomis working with the applicants. And if we get a project that is, wants to take full advantage of 100% of the possibilities but is not respectful of the surrounding neighborhoods, we can tell that. And because we have that in the books, as standards.
Okay, those are my comments. Mr. Draymond?
I'd like to, a couple of comments in no particular order. First of all, someone used the, mentioned mimes as art, I believe, just to tip you off as to how I will be voting. Anything that comes before this council that includes mimes will be immediately disqualified. Let's see. In terms of the, the two areas, whether, whether these issues related to museum or gallery or exhibit space relate to targeted areas or throughout the downtown, I, I want to make sure I wasn't misunderstood. I, I agree with what Frank is saying. Yes, it should be throughout the entire area. However, it's, it's really not going, by its nature, probably won't be applicable to all areas, just in practical sense, because the closer you get down towards, let's say, where the Americana is, just the, the property values and the, and how those buildings are going to be used are probably going to be pretty intensely retail, I'm guessing. And in other words, a developer may find these incentives far more useful on the other end of brand or the other end of Central. In other words, on the other side of the, the Alex Theater and so on. So something that he mentioned that I would also pick up on and agree with was, if you want to do that throughout the entire zone, then I would say, give extra incentives if they're willing to take a flyer on a more northerly, let's say, property. Because the whole idea is, if, if mid-brand is going to survive, then we have to increase the traffic there. And by creating some of these venues that will attract people up from the hotels, from the, the center of retail, which is going to be Americana and the Galleria, there has to be some incentive for, for a developer of a project to, to go there. So you were talking about the property, the project or the property, Wilson, I mean, Central and California.
Correct.
That's on the other end of, of the town, so that's where the extra incentive would, I think, would, would come to play. In terms of the height, referring to the Alex side versus the, the east, the west side of the street, in that area between California and Wilson, right now, it is, what, what is the cap there?
The cap is
Right now.
It's two stories or three stories using incentives.
Uh-huh.
So there's some existing three-story buildings in that
I don't know if that is sufficient to, to, my colleagues are shaking their heads, no. What would be the reason that we wouldn't go beyond two or three, well, say, three stories?
On one side of
Yeah, on, on the non-Alex side, the, the opposite, the west side of the street.
The reason, the reason for doing that would be to maintain the basic symmetry of the street on both sides. And that would not necessarily be just for an aesthetic reason, because the street would be balanced in terms of its heights, but also in terms of trying to capture the to capture the historic context of the Alex Theater, which was, when the Alex Theater was built, most of Brand Boulevard was two and three-story buildings. So there could be some, it's not a hard and fast rule, but that would be one of the reasons to do it is, so at least one block maintains that context in which the Alex was built.
Do we know how many buildings there are in between those two blocks? I mean, in between those two streets, between Wilson and California, on the opposite side, on the non-Alex?
At least, it's at least 10.
There are 11 properties. I don't know if there are as many buildings because some of them could be more than one property.
Okay. I have a question for my colleague, Mr. Weaver, with regard to FAR, there it is. I understand what you're saying about size and proportion as opposed to just an FAR equation, if you will. But doesn't that also dictate a little bit of the density itself? I mean, the, what you can do inside of the building as well, and therefore, to a certain degree, the impact?
Let me ask Hassan to answer that one.
Well, actually, it does. However, the way that we initially, when we were discussing the downtown specific land, we were going to try to do without FARs because we wanted to stay away from controlling the number of the square feet but maintaining the design aspects and the feel. But we introduced FARs simply because we needed to be able to measure the impacts, and we calculated them. So I don't think so. I don't think the FAR allow, let me just put it this way, by allowing additional FAR, we still have the stop of the number of stories. That's the single most effective way to control the impact.
So literally, that, that is the ceiling?
Mm-hmm. That is, that is the single most.
That being the case, then I would agree with Mr. Weaver on that. The, and the last two things, what, Mr. Weaver mentions the space or spaces on either side of the Alex. What exactly is there that we own, or do we?
We don't own any property north or south of the Alex Theater, in private hands. But we could create incentives to anybody that's developing along Orange, maybe an additional story if they give open space to the sides.
Along Orange or along Maryland?
Along Orange, oh, I mean, Maryland.
Maryland.
You know, if they say, well, we need three stories to make it work, well, if they give you four off of Maryland, will you dedicate open space on the, on the front?
Well, I would sure, I would sure agree with that as well.
That'd be very limited to the lots immediately north and south of the Alex Theater, if we indeed wanted to get that as open space.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just clarification, on the, on the Maryland side, the city and agency own quite a bit of that property. We do own the parking lot south of the Alex Theater at the corner of Wilson and Maryland.
Don Cucco's we own?
No. I'm talking about on the Maryland side, so that parking garage.
Oh, yeah.
We don't own anything on Brand Boulevard, but we do own most of that block.
Andy and all the rest, yeah.
Correct. And the agency owns the Alex Theater site, and then there's a private property, this is on the back on the Maryland side, and then the city owns Lot 3, which takes up most, all the way to California.
Everything funding on Brand is private?
Is privately held.
Okay. And then lastly, issues related to the museum and failure of museums and so on. There are a number of cities and areas of cities that do this just this way, Hassan mentioned one, but I think we need to be talking about the, to answer the question, what are we talking about? We're talking about museums. You're not really necessarily talking about museums that are, you know, the greatest five French Impressionists hanging on the walls. These are a variety of other types of, and the word museum might be overstating the idea anyway. But I'll give you a few examples. And I, you all know that I talk probably way too much about Baltimore. But one of the reasons I talk about Baltimore with regard to this is because Baltimore is known as the museum city. And the reason is, is because there are more museums per person in Baltimore than any city in America. But the kinds of museums are not necessarily the kinds you might be thinking of. It might be the Spiderweb Museum. It might be the Museum of Electric Light. It might be the, the Museum of Dentistry. There's a lot of very interesting, very, believe it or not, extremely popular venues that are crowded with people to see these, including private galleries. But, but it's not necessarily, you know, a, a 20,000 square foot space with, with Renoir's and Monet's and so on. So, and the whole idea is, they may not be nonprofit spaces, they may be for-profit spaces. You mentioned, Hassan, about hotels that get certain benefits, let's say, and then it doesn't work out, and it, you know, we're right back to it, we have a former hotel, what do we do with it? Now it's going to become what? Multi-family residential. You have to bring it back and look at it. It is a, it is something definitely that we need to look at, but it is, it is also one of the prices you pay when you do start moving forward and saying, we're going to add incentives so that we ourselves are not having to, out of our pockets, create cultural and, and design venues for people to go to in our city. And then the last one was.
Frank, and I got a card too.
Not within, it wasn't, not, it wasn't within 50 feet of the boundary. It was, if the project is 50% within the DSP and part is out.
Right.
I just want to make that clarification. And rather than, you know, a property which is somehow detached that is sitting within 50 feet of, I, I don't think that was the, was what you said. So, thanks.
Just some comments, some comments on the property or the block surrounding the Alex. That's the whole issue, that we have all of the property, the city has all of the property that it owns facing Maryland, yet on Brand, we don't own any of the properties. A lot of these businesses have been marginal throughout the years. There've been some anchors, Don Cucco, the pool hall, that jewelry mart seems to, seems to still be working. But in order to revitalize that section of Brand, I think we're going to have to be creative. And I'm not sure that just two stories. Obviously, whatever gets done has to be stepped away from the Alex. Public space either south of the Alex or north of the Alex is a great idea. That becomes a public venue that everyone can, can use. But I do think we have to be creative. We have that, that building that is going absolutely nowhere, and as we all know, it's really going nowhere as of the last, what we heard about the prospective tenants. So we have to come up with something creative. We have to hopefully think a little out of the box and give people the opportunity to come up with something. But whatever's tied to some public space surrounding the Alex, I'm for that. If you have to get more height along Maryland, whether it's housing or whatever it is, I'm for that. Because I think that block is, that block needs, needs to sort of get some attention.
Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, back on the 50% rule, I still believe in staffing the, the flexibility to know if it's, what should be there or not. And even if you decided it should, we still have the last say on it. So, I mean, it could jog in and out. You're going to look at the lay of the land and what's proposed, and does it work, or is it interfere? Is it putting a five-story building next to a single-family or a two-story?
What could, what could work?
You're going to know that. That's why, the 50% rule, I'd rather you have more flexibility in whatevers decide there. As far as the museums, I think, Mr. Drayman, I was driving down La Brea over the weekend, and I turned to my left, and there was a huge building. And I swear, it said on there, I think it was The Theatrical Light Museum. And I said, I didn't know something like that existed. And it was big, almost occupied a whole block. We'd go in and look at old theatrical lights, but.
Surprise.
Yeah, I guess so.
I believed when we looked at the properties east of Central bordering those multifamily neighborhoods, we talked about stepping, so there isn't going to be a, west of Central, there isn't going to be a five-story building fronting the multifamily units next to.
Back in my, back in my comments, maybe there's other incentives on the museum exhibit holes that we can use, taking off on what the mayor said. Parking and, and number of stories are concrete things. Once they're in, they're in. If there's other incentives that we can take or put on it, that if they stop using it, something happens, like, what if they had to pay a huge sum of cash to the general fund if they dared do it? There's, that's another kind of an incentive not to go away from it. Things like that, rather than telling, well, leave that upper story vacant, or come back and plead with us to say, what can we use spaces in the Orange Street Garage or something? That concerns me. Last thing that has not been discussed, that I've mentioned in the past, is parking.
Yes.
In general. I think we need more parking downtown. And the Doran Platts Project to the north was recommending that we're going to have public parking underneath.
Right.
I for one think that someday, we're going to need more parking up and down the Boulevard, and we're not going to buy a block to put parking structures in. So if we can build into it a story of public parking underneath, new buildings coming in. Now, initially, I thought, well, okay, it's all city cost. We put in another floor, that shoves it down another layer, that costs 30,000 space, whatever. Okay, so that happens, and we get the upper level. What if it becomes an incentive, so it's not all public dollars, but the developer gets something above by paying part of the cost to add that story for public parking up and down the Boulevard? Another potential incentive for us to get parking fronting right onto Brand, or itself to the Alex, for instance. Just a thought.
Mr. Drayman?
Yeah, I want to also say that with regard to that 50%, I also agree. It's a project that would be, that we all could sit and agree would be fantastic for this city, that would potentially, we would not have advantage of simply because it's 45% or 48%.
That's okay.
Yeah, so I, you can put me, if you're taking notes, I don't know how you take notes, but if you are, you can certainly put me in that, in that category. And with regard to the issue that the mayor raised, and I neglected to get to, and Mr. Weaver also raised, about buildings that would have this in parking or and/or height incentive, and then the use would change, let's say, maybe there are other, other ways. I mean, I certainly also would not want to see a couple of empty floors. It benefits no one, really, and, but maybe there, there is a, a way that they would then have to buy themselves out of their contract, so to speak.
Expensively.
Yeah. But, but I guarantee you that without a parking, a major parking incentive and a height incentive, I don't think this will happen. I don't think you'll see it happen. Because those, just as you pointed out in the beginning of your presentation, that is the, that is, you mentioned the key elements that, to developers, and those were two of the primary key elements.
Mr. Cap?
Mr. Agani, yes. And then I do have a speaker. Why don't we ask, why don't we let the speaker come forward, Mr. Ovanesian, and then we can wrap up and tell us where we've, what we've covered.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of the Council. My name is Rubik Ovanesian, Cranbrook Realty Corporation. I want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Hassan Agani, Alan Loomis, and I guess the enthusiasm of Councilman Drayman for coming forward and proposing or suggesting all these incentives, options, and also cleanup items. I, I was asked to join the downtown study group a couple of years ago when they were working, and I was too busy doing transactions other parts of the state. So I was unable and turned down Mr. Hassan Agani's and Alan Loomis's request to be part of the committee. So some of these items, later on, as I, the zoning went into play, and I had the opportunity to discuss them with Mr. Agani, I'd mentioned that, but there's quite a few items. I share the enthusiasm of Councilman Drayman, that is finally, Glendale is, City of Glendale stepping up to the, you know, stage and trying to do something positive. And, you know, it's kind of hard for me to swallow art and culture in Glendale. You know, I've represented several clients that when you talk about Glendale, just say, there's nothing like that goes to Glendale. You know, you go to Pasadena, West Side, to Santa Monica. You know, a few years back, when the Crusoe Project was being ushered through the city, I proposed a couple of hotel sites at the northwest corner of the Brand and Colorado, and also at the DPSS site. Council then didn't see the light of the day, staff gave me the runaround then, and et cetera. And then now, five, we have five hotel projects moving forward. Of course, the timing is off, they're not going to happen, but that's another story. It all boils into financial feasibility of the development project. You have to incentivize so then the project can pencil out. On the 50%, I'm just going to bit some pieces as discussion took place, I took some notes. On the 50%, the property, development property being 50% or greater, I concur with Councilman Drayman and Weaver that either 50% or at the discretion of the staff, because there are properties are shaped such as a, as a L shape, they have a great frontage, but they are skinnier in the back. So it comes back to the good of the project and the call of the, either 50% in the DSP zone, or it's to the benefit of the project and the city. And, you know, because it has a great frontage. The problem exists all of the west side of Central, as I've discussed it with the staff several times. Unfortunately, this is the first go at it, and the staff didn't do the study and report to you that. We have about an eight-block radius from 134 Freeway to the Broadway, and about there is about eight or nine pieces of property that are actually split into the two zonings on multifamily and the DSP. So this would address that problem and resolve that, and it would be the call of the staff and the council. Glendale historically has been a very difficult city to do projects, and it takes everything, just takes quite a bit longer to do the projects. And maybe with the streamlining ordinance and some of these incentives, time would make it work, the projects. There were a couple of other items I wanted to briefly mention.
I didn't need to stop him, I just, the light was blinking on and off, I never saw that before.
Currently, there are about five projects in the downtown that are for sale. So, timing is a little bit off, but again, these would support a lot of the ideas and feasibility of the projects that are being discussed and are on the drawing boards for the developers. My question would be, what would be the timing to get some of these streamlined and finally approved via ordinance or part of the DSP? I support most of the recommendations of the staff as far as the, as was outlined, with a couple of minor modifications, one being the 50% or to the call of the staff, depending on the shape of the property. And quite a few of the properties, as I mentioned earlier, on the west side of Central, have those issues. As far as the FAR increase, that's very important. You know, again, square footage is what sells end of the day, and the developers need to be able to financially make sense of the projects. So those are my comments, and I support the recommendations that the staff are putting forward and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Agani, why don't you come forward, tell us what you've heard, and also give us the timeframe and the process for which we'll be implementing these suggestions for amendments.
Okay. The direction that we, I put down is that you are not directing us to make any changes to public, the public art requirements and the public open space requirements. However, on the incentives from museums, galleries, and exhibit spaces, correctly said, you have given us the direction to look at perhaps distant in- have given us the direction to look at perhaps disincentives for, and I would call them disincentives for removing those particular benefits, if that is in fact what happens, and/or giving alternatives to something as straightforward as height and FAR. We'll give you some options for that to look at. And then regarding height and density standards, you, I do not hear any objections to increasing the FAR a little bit across downtown, and we might give you a little bit variations from .5. But I did, we did receive direction to give you options for the Alex Theater District, not only north of California, but also perhaps looking at across the street from the Alex Theater, to see what other options we can give you that would allow additional height and density there. And then regarding the rules projects, partially in the DSP zones, you gave us the direction to don't limit ourselves to a 50% of the area rule, but look at a broader way of defining projects that may be applicable to be reviewed under the DSP. And we could look at some findings that we could, that are broader and not as specific as 50%. And then the text cleanups, you gave us direction to follow through.
Mr. Weaver?
One question, Mr. Agani.
Yes.
On--
Let's wrap this up.
Yeah. It's just, I thought, back of, on Maryland.
Yes.
Next, the Alex. If we stick with the two, three-story tall, if, if it made sense to staff and to us to allow four, I'm just saying, four on Maryland, would they have to go through a variance process to get to us then?
Maryland allows four stories. So behind that, the Alex Theater, you can actually go taller. It's right on Brand that we are limiting the height.
Okay, we'll say then, it was four, and want to go five. Would it require a variance? Is that the process that would be followed?
Four to six. It's four to six. So with the up to six stories, you do not need any variance.
I think that takes care of it.
The Maryland area is taken care of. It's just on the lots of fronting Brand Boulevard.
I'm just trying to get the flexibility for anybody that might come in without having to go through the variance process.
And as far as the timing, this would require a general plan amendment, and in addition to the downtown specific plan amendment, an additional environmental work. Our next step would be, we'll bring, initiate, we'll bring a report to the city council to initiate those actions. That would take somewhere over six months to process, because of the timing of the noticing and the environmental work involved.
So would there have to be an amendment to the EIR for the downtown--
It'll be a, yes, additional environmental review. We'll have to assess what the additional review process will be, because it does also involve amending the general plan because of the surrounding areas as well.
All right, this was just for directions, so there's no vote or anything, and that's it.
Moving adjourned.
For?
City Council.
Safer.
Council's adjourned?
Will we adjourn for the redevelopment?
One second.
Thank you, we're adjourned.